Okay, we're gonna do this one the same way. Make our square. Take our pins out. Make your feet up, turn. Put it back down. We'll take this other pin out. Back and forth. We're gonna turn it around, lift your feet, turn, and all you're doing is...
Madam Clerk, please call the robe.
Griffin.
Here.
Bishop. Conwell. Gray. Hairston. Harsh. House. Jones. Casey. Moore. McCormick. Mooney. Polensik. Santana. Slife. Spencer. Starr. You have a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. Will everyone rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please dispense with the journal.
By Councilmember Starr that the reading of the minutes of the last meeting be dispensed with the journal approved, seconded by Councilmember Moore.
Thank you. We'll now have public comment. And I want to make sure I remind all of the councilmembers to please turn around and acknowledge our speakers as they give public comment. First, we have Mario Pollard from Cleveland to talk about replacement of lead service lines. And he's with Cleveland Lead Advocates for Safe Housing, CLASH.
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Mario Pollard, once again with CLASH. And I am here again to press for a strategy in addressing the lead poisoning crisis in our city. Last year, Cleveland initiated its lead service line program to replace both public and private lines, bringing water to childcare centers, and wonderfully at no additional cost to ratepayers through federal funding and the H2 Ohio program. However, and while this is to be commended, we know that Ohio contains the second highest number of lead service lines in the country, particularly in the urban centers like Cleveland. And that means we can't settle for the bare minimum of action. So on that note, CLASH has some suggestions to make on ways to strengthen Cleveland's lead service line program. We recommend that once the childcare facilities are made safe from the outside, that work go towards making the childcare centers safe on the inside with internal fixtures. And we also believe that this can be done with more funding. The additional upside to this is this gives our lead service workers and testers opportunity to identify more potential hotspots for where lead poisoning problems could arise. Our second recommendation is that we would hope to see this program expanded from the childcare centers into the further community, particularly into schools and low-income housing, usually where childcare centers or neighborhoods affected by high levels of lead poisoning risk. You can find the same for the schools and the homes. And we also would recommend that the city invest in an ambassador-like program to get people out into the community, specifically with the childcare centers, to convince them to get on board with this program. It would come as a surprise to many people that the childcare centers are hesitant about programs like this. Understandably so, because they usually fight to protect their business from interference from the government. And lead poisoning is not a good image for the childcare center business to have when it's trying to attract families to make sure that their children are safe. But we believe that, you know, with a proper education and involvement, they can see this as an upside to say, hey, these are places where your children will be safe and where lead prevention works with that community.
Time? Thank you, sir. Next, we have Robert J. Rice from Stockyards to talk about housing and ending source-of-income discrimination. He's from the Greater Cleveland Housing Justice Coalition. Sir, please make sure that you acknowledge the clock.
Good evening. My name is Robert Rice. I'm a resident of Ward 14, and I'm a member of the New African Independence Party and co-founder of the Greater Cleveland Housing Justice Coalition. Last year, Cleveland City Council stated that racism is a public health crisis. Both Cleveland's Department of Public Health and Cuyahoga County Board of Health considers fair housing to be a public health issue. When it comes to those who have more privileged access to health and equity, it is clear that your zip code and source of income is the determining factor in 2019. Is the determining factor... In 2019, the Center for Community Solutions concluded that the poorer your neighborhood is, the lower your life expectancy is. Through the generations of structural racism within Cleveland and Cuyahoga County, largely at the policy and organizational level, this has limited opportunities for people of color and those in poverty. These residents largely live in neighborhoods that were redlined by the Federal Housing Authority and supported banks as they refused to give or limited the amount of loans to people of color in particular neighborhoods, leading to a limited wealth-creating opportunities such as homeownership and racial segregation. Due to this, largely people of color and those under the poverty line have only been able to become renters. But due to source-of-income discrimination, landlords refuse to rent to tenants who use some form of public housing vouchers or subsidies. This affects tenants with the opportunity to find stable, quality housing in a neighborhood of their choice. A recent study indicated that voucher recipients were denied housing 95% of the time in select Cleveland neighborhoods. Again, most of the residents who use public rent subsidies live in the same communities that were redlined in the 1930s, under faced with the shorter health outcomes because of this. It is important to note that, in particular, 90% of housing voucher recipients in Cuyahoga County are African-American, and 40% are headed by people with disabilities. Source-of-income discrimination is a legal practice, but it's clear that this has just been used as a loophole for landlords to refuse to rent to tenants based on not only the amount of income they make, but largely because of the people of color, in particular, African-Americans. Housing policy is imperative in fixing these historical and contemporary systemic injustices. As a resident of Cleveland and on behalf of the NAIP and the Housing Justice Coalition, we demand that Cleveland City Council live up to their responsibility in serving the constituents who voted them in. By bringing a formal legislative end to this practice, you work for us, and it's time you put action into your words. All power to the people, free to land.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. The next person we have up is Erica D. Jarvis-Jones from Ward 8 to talk about lead testing, the mobile unit, and she represents CLASH.
Good evening. So today, I kind of wanted to share the importance of childhood lead testing. And as a young woman who's experienced lead poisoning, this is very important. So we know that the rate of testing has dropped every year since 2016. In 2021, we've only tested 9,700 children. That is 3,700 fewer than 2016. So we know that in order for children and people to thrive with being exposed to lead, early testing is the key to start mitigation. According to the testimony last week in the Finance Committee, the Department of Health plans to roll out two test events, which I brought up in October, by the way. According to the Medical Director Karen Cooper, these vans will be the equivalent of a neighborhood health clinic on wheels. So CLASH has a few recommendations that we would like to share, and hopefully these are implemented. So one, the Cleveland Department of Public Health should form partnerships with childcare centers and child-serving agencies to host health vans at their facilities. Families won't have to make an additional trip to their healthcare centers or providers to get their children tested. Second is that these mobile vans should use a one-stop protocol, similar to what Metro Health is doing, so that at-risk families, once again, do not have to make a second trip and make it convenient for families. Third, I know there is one staff member, but we should consider hiring another staff member that is bilingual in both English and in Spanish. And we should also form relationships with organizations that are serving our immigrant families. Next, in order to maintain sustainability, we should seek reimbursement from private insurance and/or Medicaid when patients are eligible, so we can continue this testing. The Cleveland Department of Public Health should initiate case management services to families showing an elevated blood lead level even before receiving a referral back from the Ohio Department of Health. Cleveland Council should be complimented for this initial step towards these early diagnoses. If the results of this step are shown, which I believe it will be, the increased number of tested children, we should make a long-term commitment. As Dr. Cooper said in her testimony, these mobile van, testing vans are the equivalent of a city brick-and-mortar clinic. This program should have that funding stability. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jarvis-Jones. Next, we have Kareem Hinton from Cleveland to talk about housing. He represents Black Lives Matter Cleveland. Is Mr. Hinton here? Mr. Hinton is not here? Okay, we'll go to the next person. We have Ibrahim Muntazzer, Ward 15, and kicked out troubled neighborhood business. Ibrahim Muntazzer. Please acknowledge the clock, sir.
Yes. So, hey, everybody, my name is Ibrahim. I'm a small business owner and a tenant right next to two big project buildings. It's got highly traffic, a lot of loitering, and if not my windows being broken, if not, I guess, violence. Instead of the police helping me, they imprison me. That's it. Done.
You're done, sir? All right, thank you so much, Mr. Muntazzer. Thank you. Next up, we have Christopher Martin, Ward 3, regarding public comment. Mr. Martin, please acknowledge the clock.
Hello. I don't really want to be here tonight, but I have the privilege to make these meetings in person and speak to you. My friend Lakita Worley Bell works until 7:00 PM on Mondays, so she is unable to make it here for public comment. And she had some trouble submitting her statement online, so I'm gonna read it for her. First, though, I want to make some quick notes about public comment itself. There is no good reason for you to limit the number of speakers to 10. Kita mentioned that to me, and I agree. You shouldn't need to pre-register. There is no standard process for allowing public comment at committee meetings. If you're even allowed, it's an opaque process to sign up. And the meetings themselves are held when most folks can't show up anyway. The dress code for public commenters is a silly but egregious limit on our free speech, although I suppose it's at least less sexist than the dress code you impose on yourselves under the council rules. You should allow public commenters to submit video or audio remotely. Your submission form for written testimony should allow for attachments. My friend Kita tried to submit a written comment with an attachment. This is what she wanted to tell you. My name is Lakita Worley Bell. I wanted to be here tonight, but I'm working. I usually take the number nine bus to work and home. Sometimes I ride the number 40 to the number three to straight downtown when I don't want to wait for the nine. I also love riding the Rapid from Superior all the way to Qdal. I ride this on Saturdays once a month. One day, I was at the West 25th Rapid Station, walking toward the elevator, when an armed police officer approached me, rudely asking for my pass. My hands were full because I had just gone shopping, so I started to put my bags down to get my pass. The police officer was very rude and inappropriate, and it made me feel very angry. People who don't pay a parking ticket don't risk going to jail over it. I think it's unjust that I could risk going to jail if I didn't have my pass on me. I've kept all my passes since then because I'm scared of going to jail. I also think there should be a discounted price for Cleveland residents. Mr. President, I have 18 copies of the picture Kita wanted to share, the picture of her passes, one for each counselor and one for the clerk. May I distribute them?
Please give them to Officer Marisol, and then she'll make sure that we all get them.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Martin. Next, I have Diane Howard from Ward 3, Cleveland, to talk about fare evasion. And she's with Clevelanders for Public Transit. Ms. Howard.
Good evening, Council President.
Good evening.
And to all the councilmen and women, good evening. I'm here to speak on fare evasion. First, I'm gonna tell a story of what happened to my granddaughter back in 2017. She was on a health line. She didn't have, couldn't find a bus pass. She got arrested. She called someone to come and get her children. She had five, I have five, she had five children. Really, I have 39 great-grandchildren. Anyway, she got arrested because she didn't have her bus pass by the RTA police. I think this should not be a crime. The fare evasion, I think, is unjust to go to jail because of, you may not have enough bus fare or a bus pass. Please consider all the riders who can't afford a bus pass, including the homeless, including the ones that's getting out of jail. This should not be a crime because you don't have enough bus fare. So please, councilmen and councilwomen, take this under consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. Next up, we have Samuel Martinez from Little Italy to talk about ordinance number 210-2022 regarding expansion of Case Western Reserve University and UCI Police Jurisdiction. Mr. Martinez, is Mr. Martinez available? Mr. Martinez is not here, we'll move on. Next, we have Odetta Fields from Ward 12 to talk about the county jail site. And she represents the community yahoos. Ms. Fields.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight to speak to you on behalf of my fellow neighbors. Upon talking to the residents throughout Slavic Village and North Broadway community, I would like to say we are not against a new county jail. We are in support of a new and more humane jail. What we are against is it being built in our residential neighborhood. In fact, we are against it being built in any residential neighborhood. We believe it being built in a residential area will only have negative impact on the businesses and the residents in any residential community. We are here to stand by our councilmembers, Rebecca Maurer and Richard Starr. I speak on behalf of Slavic Village and North Broadway and give them the complete support of our community.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Thank you, Ms. Fields. And last but not least, we have John Giro from Ward 13 to talk about the EMS contract. Mr. Giro. Please acknowledge the clock, sir. You have three minutes.
Okay, so since 2019, the EMS contract has not been followed by the city of Cleveland. They have completed arbitration, and the city attorneys appealed to overturn the final and binding arbitration. The judge ruled in favor of arbitration and awarded interest payments, which is increasing in cost to the city. The city retained attorneys, then appealed to the appeals court further wasting money and paid outside city council to do this. As a 20-year-plus resident to the city of Cleveland and knowing that they have staffing issues with EMS, why is this still a battle, and why can't we give EMS their contractual pay structure? I pay a lot of city taxes, and I want to make sure if anybody gets their pay that they deserve, it's our safety forces, because when I need them, they are the first to respond. It's not the mayor, it's not the councilman, it's going to be EMS, fire, and police. That's it, quick and simple.
Thank you, Mr. Giro. All right, seeing no more public speakers, Madam Clerk, can you please share communications?
File number 198, 2022, from Amber Sealy Marks, developer of Penrose LLC. Notice of intent to apply to Ohio Housing Finance Agency for multifamily funding programs for the development known as Cedar IV at 2591 Community College Avenue, Ward 5. File number 199, 2022, from Amber Sealy Marks. Notice of intent to apply to Ohio Housing Finance Agency for multifamily funding for the development known as Warner and Swayze II at 5701 Carnegie Avenue, Ward 5. File number 200, 2022, from Orion H. Bell, President and CEO Benjamin Rose Institute. Notice of intent to apply to Ohio Housing Finance Agency for multifamily funding programs for the development known as Margaret Wagner Senior Apartments at 2373-75 Euclid Heights Boulevard. File number 201, 2022, from Mark Whipkey. Housing, I'm sorry, CHN Housing Partners. Notice of intent to apply to Ohio Housing Finance Agency for multifamily funding programs for the development known as Hope Homes I at several sites in Cleveland, on Hamlin Avenue, Wendy Drive, East 118th Street, East 119th Street, East 120th, East 126th, East 188th and 189th Streets, Wards 1 and 6. File number 202, 2022, from Jonathan McKay, Frontline Development Corporation. Notice of intent to apply to Ohio Housing Finance Agency for multifamily funding programs for the development known as Gordon Crossing, Woodward Avenue, and East 101st, Ward 7. File number 203, 2022, from Dr. Gina Merritt. Northern Real Estate Urban Ventures. Notice of intent to apply to Ohio Housing Finance Agency for multifamily funding programs for the development known as 9410 Huff at 9410 Huff Avenue, Ward 7. File number 204, 2022, oath of office for Alyssa Hernandez, Director of Department of Community Development. File number 205, 2022, oath of office for Sally Martin, Director of Department of Building and Housing. File number 206, 2022, oath of office for Ahmed Abanima, and I apologize if I mispronounced that. Executive Assistant to Mayor, Chief Finance Officer. File number 207, 2022, oath of office for Joyce Wong, Director of City Planning Commission, City of Cleveland. File number 190, from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control. File number 194, 2022, new license application at 15301 to 05 Kensman Road, Ward 1. File number 195, 2022, economic development transfer application at 1313 Old River Road, Ward 3. File number 196, 2022, transfer of ownership application at 6200 Riverside Drive, Ward 17. File number 197, 2022, transfer of ownership application at 20920 Brook Park Road, Ward 17. File number 208, 2022, at a new license application at 1301 East 9th Street, Ward 3. File number 236, 2022, transfer of ownership application at 2175 Cornell Road, Ward 6. File number 237, 2022, transfer of ownership application at 1515 Euclid Avenue, Ward 3. File number 238, 2022, transfer of license application at 13124 Lorraine Avenue, Ward 16.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, condolence resolutions?
Resolutions of condolence by Councilmember Hairston for Alonzo Payton Hagler, by Councilmember Casey for the Honorable Paula R.A. Mizik.
Are there any other condolences? Seeing none, may all councilmembers rise for a moment of silence. Thank you. Congratulatory resolutions?
Resolutions of congratulations by Councilmember Bishop for Gary C. Stiggers, by Councilmember Gray... Gray for Elizabeth, Saint Elizabeth of Hungary Catholic Church on their one-hundredth anniversary, by Councilmember House for Johnny B. Yarborough. Resolutions of recognition by Councilmember Conwell for Brian Akil Marshall, by Councilmember Griffin for the Real Black Friday Business Expo.
Thank you. I believe we have two presentations, Councilman Conwell, and I believe we are going to start out with Akil, my friend Akil Marshall. I'm going to ask if the two councilmembers, Councilwoman Spencer and Councilwoman Gray, can open up the well to welcome in our guest Akil Marshall. Thank you so much. Please join us here, Mr. Marshall. I believe you have your lovely daughter and family with you.
This is your baby right here. Yeah, that's the cool thing, man. Yeah, 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 you're cool, Akil, man. You know, this brother's been working in the community for a long time and giving back in the city of Cleveland since, I think since the late seventies or eighties, man. You've been helping out, giving back, doing things in the schools with the children, helping out, and, matter of fact, we honored you on MLK Day at Severance Hall in two thousand and six. He's telling me, well, this, this award here is on behalf of all city councilmembers, all seventeen of us, whereas members of Cleveland City Council are sincerely pleased to commend the American author, oh, I didn't know that part, motivational speaker, educational fitness consultant, and Cleveland native Brian Akil Marshall for his exceptional commitment, passion, and motivation to help others, as you, Akil, and recognizing him as the NBA's first strength training coach with the Cleveland Cavaliers nineteen eighty-four to nineteen eighty-eight. Whereas as a young child, now I'm going to go down here, man, because you, you were the strength of the coach, coach for, uh, World Be Free. That dude could shoot, man. Mel Turpin, John Hot Rod Williams, Phil Hubbard, Mark West, Chris Dudley, Mark Price, he can shoot too, Craig Elo, and many, many, many others that you were the strength of the coach for. That was a great, great team. And if you want to say some words, so we want to honor you for that.
I'm a Clevelander. On Saturday, I'll be seventy-four years old. It's, it's an honor, starting off on Fortieth and Quincy, Green Court. I see so many people that I know out here right now. I see teachers and principals that I've done work with over the years with Glenville. Glenville would have been the school, the high school I would have graduated from in nineteen sixty-six. It would have been from the first class, from the new Glenville, but I graduated from Pond Forge Academy, the, the, one of the four black boarding academies in America. And then my, my roommate at that school today did the Senate prayer. Dr. Chaplain Barry Black was my roommate, and he's the chaplain for the United States Senate. He was the first black chaplain to the United States Navy. That was, that was my roommate. And, you know, I see so many people who have just said motivational things to me and council people, Ms. Long, this is my last child, my, my, I have six children, my oldest is fifty-two, this is my baby girl, twenty-two, I'm proud of all of them, my children are my world, they rock, great citizens. Everything that city council wants children to be, I am so blessed that my children are. And, and, and the work in the schools with so many principals, teachers, and locally and nationally, I am, I'm a, I'm a proud Clevelander, I'm a very proud black man, I'm a proud citizen of the world, and I, I've been a child of God, God has been with me. God and I have been rocking and rolling a long time, and my prayer to God is, let's not stop. Let's keep this thing going. Let's keep doing it. So I appreciate it so, so very, very much. God bless everyone. And Kevin Conwell has been just motivational, always saying some motivational things to me as a young man. I appreciate it so, so very, very much. God bless everyone.
You know, and your daughter here is, is here to see you, and that's one of the greatest things, even dealing with a daughter, seeing her father, and that's how she ended up picking a great husband, just by watching dad. So you're dad, man.
Stay careful.
Thank you, and God bless you. So we're going to bring up the mighty, mighty Tar Blooders at school that you wish you, I mean, you almost went to.
That's, that's the school.
That's the school, man. So he's, he's coming down. Come on, uh, Council President. Akil, you want to take a picture with el Presidente?
Yes, you want to do the same?
So we do that. Thank you, Brian. Man, you can always come in the mix, man. You're my cat, man. And, and, and your, and your baby, your, your baby.
I appreciate this.
Yeah, yeah.
I appreciate this. This is.
The daughter in the middle. We do father-daughter bonding.
Sure is, sure is.
Are you my cat, man? You're cool. So, so can we bring up, um, Councilmember Mike Polensick, Councilmember Anthony Harrison? They shared this with us with Glenville, Tar Blooders. And the sleeve, the sleeve, you got to get the sleeve. And we bring, uh, the mighty, mighty Tar Blooders, you heard it, Akil. Come on up, you guys. This is your place as well. It's the people place, which is very, very, very important. We bring the mayor in as well, because they want to meet the mayor. And I want you guys to shake the mayor's hand, because, uh, children need to see success every day, the mayor is there, yeah. I saw you play, man. I started to come, yeah, yeah. Yeah, man.
Y'all looking good, man.
And, um, the principal, Jackie, and Doris Reddick.
Congratulations, gentlemen. Congratulations, man.
Yeah, let me, um, let me grab the plaque too.
Congratulations, big fella. Congratulations, man. Congratulations, man. Congratulations, boss.
Right here, right now.
Good job, man.
Come on up.
What's up, man?
What's up, man? All right. Principal Jackie Bell.
Sister Jackie.
That's the only other color, you're right. You know, where's Starr at? Starr was there at the game, we watched the game, we watched the, come on, man, can you text me? We watched the mighty, mighty Tar Blooders, um, win, and, um, we are very, very proud on behalf, you everybody here, man, you in the middle.
No, I need to talk like that.
Yeah, we going to hook you up. I told my assistant to give all of y'all scrolls, but, um, we want to give this to, to you, Coach. Not only, let me tell you this, a lot of people look at basketball, but the coach teaches more than basketball. He teaches character. He teaches, um, self-discipline, how to get up in the morning and practice, and how to study. He teaches them organizational skills. He teaches them honesty, credibility, and integrity. A lot of people just think bouncing the basketball, or whatever the case may be, and he teaches them how to work together as a team. So on behalf of the three hundred and seventy-five thousand residents in the city of Cleveland and the seventeen councilmembers, we appreciate Glenville for winning, for winning the Senate League Championship with this plaque on support of, of Councilmember Mike Polensick, on support of Councilmember Anthony Hairston, on support of Council President Blaine Griffin, Mayor Justin Beer, I got to mention the wife, remember I mentioned the wife now, Jackie, uh, Yvonne Conwell, County Councilwoman, and myself, mighty, mighty Tar Blooders, I yield to you to say something real quick, and good job. You, they won the city, the city's city. You're only a two-five. Same there, you know.
Thank you, city council, uh, personnel and Mayor Bibb. It's always an honor to be here. It is more than basketball. We have a great community in the Glenville community, great staff at Glenville High School and students. This is my eighteenth or nineteenth trip here with these. So I'm just blessed to be here. I was sick, and Kevin Conwell, Councilman Conwell came to the Cancer Society and Center, and, 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 and I spent nine months there with leukemia, and God is good, I'm free of it now. I love these guys, and I love Ms. Bell.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Love you too.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. P. Wallace, and the Council President, I want me to move along.
Okay, yeah, I'm going to move. That's for you.
Or you going to say something real quick, because you'll call me, you'll jump on me, you won't let me get away with nothing.
I'm going to be very short. On behalf of Glenville High School, Gann Academy as well, I want to say thank you guys very much for this recognition. This is not something that we take for granted. We work hard, the guys deserve it. So thank you so very much for doing this.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Anthony Hairston, the Tar Blooders also, and, uh, so thank you very, very much. Um, we're going to move right along. Take care, have a blessed day, you guys.
First reading emergency ordinances for administrative review and committee review.
Ordinance two-oh-nine, twenty-twenty-two by Councilmembers McCormack, Bishop, and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing Director of Public Works to enter into an agreement with Ohio City Incorporated to reestablish and continue to manage programs to benefit the West Side market for a period not to exceed four years. Ordinance two-twelve, twenty-twenty-two by Councilmembers Polensick and Griffin by departmental request to supplement the codified ordinances of Cleveland, Ohio by enacting new section one-thirty-five point five-three-one relating to agreements to share crime and safety information with residents and solicit access and store home, and store home camera footage and images, and to repeal ordinance four-fifty-four, twenty-twenty-one relating to one or more agreements with Ring for the city to participate in the neighbors' public, the neighbors' public safety service. Ordinance two-thirteen, twenty-twenty-two by Councilmembers McCormack, Bishop, and Hairston by departmental request, authorizing Director of Capitol Projects to the Goat My Place LLC to encroach into the public right-of-way of West Twenty-Fifth Street by installing, using, and maintaining two metal canopies supported by four metal columns as well as metal railings with wood caps. Ordinance two-fourteen, twenty-twenty-two by Councilmembers McCormack and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing Director of Port Control to enter into a lease agreement with the Cleveland Clinic Foundation for Use and Occupancy of Space on Concourse B at Cleveland-Hopkins International Airport for the purpose of constructing and operating a concierge lounge for arriving and departing domestic and international patients of the clinic for the Department of Port Control for a period of three years with three one-year options to renew, exercisable by the Director of Port Control. Ordinance two-fifteen, twenty-twenty-two by Councilmembers Bishop and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing Director of Public Works to enter into a license agreement with Key Bank National Association to use and occupy city-owned property located within the city, within Cleveland City Hall for the installation and maintenance of a Key Bank Automated Teller Machine Terminal located at room one-twenty-two, vital statistics for the use and convenience of the general public for a period of two years with one additional one-year option to renew, exercisable by the Director of Public Works. Ordinance two-sixteen, twenty-twenty-two by Councilmembers Bishop and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Public Works to employ one or more professional consultants to provide services necessary to manage the Gateway East Garage for a period of one year with two one-year options to renew, exercisable by the Director of Public Works. Ordinance two-seventeen, twenty-twenty-two by Councilmembers Bishop and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the purchase by one or more requirement contracts of Rock Salt for the Division of Streets, Department of Public Works for a period of one year. Ordinance two-eighteen, twenty-twenty-two by Councilmembers Bishop and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing the Director of Capitol Projects to make alterations and modifications in a contract with Town Center Construction for rehabilitating the Music Hall roof Phase Two in the public auditorium. Ordinance two-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-two by Councilmembers McCormack, Bishop, and Griffin by departmental request to amend section one-thirty-one point twenty-one of the codified ordinances relating to the rental of market stalls and to repeal section five-fifty-three point oh-seven intoxicating liquors as enacted by ordinance six-thirty-four ten A passed September twenty-second, nineteen twenty-four.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First reading emergency ordinances to be passed.
Ordinance two-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-two by Councilmembers Polensick and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing Director of Public Safety to enter into one or more written standard, uh, purchase and requirement contracts without competitive bidding with Breathing Air Systems, a Division of Subaquatics, for the purchase of Bauer Breathing Air Compressors and Accessories for the Division of Fire, Department of Public Safety for a period not to exceed one year with two one-year options to renew, exercisable by the Director of Public Safety. Ordinance two-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-two by Councilmembers Polensick and Griffin by departmental request, authorizing Director of Public Safety to enter into one or more written standard purchase and requirement contracts without competitive bidding with Zoll Medical Corporation for the purchase of cardiac monitors and defibrillators and accessories for the Division of Emergency Medical Services, Department of Public Safety for a period not to exceed one year with two one-year options to renew, exercisable by the Director of Public Safety.
Read the motion to suspend the rules.
By Councilmember Starr, that the rules be suspended and the legislation just read be placed on final passage, seconded by Councilmember Moore.
Call to roll.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh House, Jones, Casey, Moore, McCormack, Mooney, Polensick, Santana, Sly, Spencer, Starr. Sixteen yays.
Call to roll on passage.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh House, Jones, Casey, Moore, McCormack, Mooney, Polensick, Santana, Sly, Spencer, Starr.
Madam Clerk, I have Councilman Casey on that point.
Mr. President, please mark me a no on two-twenty-four and two-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-two. Thank you.
So noted.
Thank you. First reading emergency resolutions refer for administrative review and committee review.
Resolution two-nineteen, twenty-twenty-two by Councilmembers Starr and Moore, strongly opposing Cuyahoga County's selection of the Cuyahoga Valley Industrial Center at Pershing Avenue and Ward Twelve as the location of a new jail, and further opposing Cuyahoga County's alternative use of the Cuyahoga Valley Industrial Center as a container storage facility. Resolution two-twenty, twenty-twenty-two by Councilmembers Hairston and Griffin by departmental request, supporting the adoption of the twenty-twenty-two Department of Community Development
First reading emergency resolutions to be adopted.
Resolution two-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two by Councilmember Jones, objecting to a new C-two liquor permit at one-forty-three oh-two Harvard Avenue. Resolution two-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two by Councilmember House, objecting to the transfer of ownership of a D-one, D-two, D-three liquor permit to thirty-two thirty-two Lakeside Avenue. Resolution two-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-two by Councilmember Casey, objecting to the transfer of location of a D-one, D-two liquor permit at one-thirty-one twenty-four Lorraine Avenue. a D1, D2 liquor permit at 13124 Lorraine Avenue. Resolution 227, 2022 by Councilmember Moore, withdrawing objection to the transfer of ownership of a C1, C2 liquor permit at 6405 Fleet Avenue, first floor, and repealing resolution 317, 2021, objecting to said permit. Resolution 235, 2022 by Councilmembers Polensik, Harsh, Griffin, McCormack, Conwell, Spencer, Moore, Bishop, Gray, Hairston, House, Jones, Casey, Mooney, Santana, Sly, Starr, strongly condemning the resolution, I'm sorry, strongly condemning the Russian invasion of Ukraine, denouncing Vladimir Putin's years-long aggression against this sovereign country, supporting Ukraine and the Ukrainian people and encouraging the U.S. and its partners to continue the exceptionally strong sanctions against Russia.
Read the motion to suspend the rules.
By Councilmember Starr, that the rules be suspended and the legislation just read be placed on final passage, seconded by Councilmember Moore.
Call the roll.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh House, Jones, Casey, Moore, McCormack, Mooney, Polensik, Santana, Sly, Spencer, Starr. 16 yeas.
Call the roll on adoption. Councilman Polensik.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, my honorable colleagues, Madam Clerk, Honorable Mayor. Mr. Chairman, in my time in this body, this wonderful group of elected officials, historically, we stood tall and we've taken and passed strong resolutions, whether it be against the genocide that we saw take place, witnessed in Uganda, Congo, Bosnia. We stood tall, we passed resolutions condemning the South African government with apartheid policies they had established which destroyed the lives of countless numbers of individuals. Historically, this council has repeatedly taken a position to support individuals throughout the world who've been oppressed, who've been violated, who've been harmed, who've been murdered. Tonight I rise, Mr. Chairman, and I urge all my colleagues and I want to thank all members who signed on ordinance number 235-2022. We have been witnessing since February 24th absolute carnage that has been taking place against the Ukrainian people by nothing more than a thug, thug dictator. I don't know how else to describe it, killing innocent men, women and children for no reason at all. Before I came in this chamber tonight, I put on a monitor to see that they're whole, they're just totally destroying the second largest city in Ukraine, moving more troops into the country. Again, absolute, absolute violence and mayhem and chaos and cold-blooded murder. Mr. Chairman, again, this council has stood tall in the past and we need to stand tall again to send the message that this type of behavior is not tolerable, we will not tolerate it. We have to speak out and we have to call upon our officials in Washington to condemn it and take whatever action they can to combat it. Vladimir Putin needs to be, needs to be brought to his economic knees. And this should be a wake-up call, Mr. Chairman, for all of us in America, that we have to become energy independent and we have to start making things again in America. If we don't look out for our own people and start strengthening our own economy, who's to say what might not happen in our own country? So, again, Mr. Chairman, I want to thank my colleagues who signed on for this resolution. I'm urging the clerk, as soon as we pass this, please send it off to Washington. They need to see exactly where we stand, as we stood in the past, the condemning tyrants and dictators brutality, racism as a hatred. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman Polensik. Councilman Joe Jones on the resolution presented.
Mr. Chairman, sometimes when you say things, people may not understand them. And when you stand up to talk about the issues such as this, I believe that America needs to show strength. And one of the ways that America continue and can show strength in this particular conflict is to put on the table all options, including military options. If we have a big stake, why not show that we have the possibility of being able to use it? And when we do that and we show the strength that we have as a country, we prevent these kinds of hostilities happening across the globe. So, Mr. President, I join my colleague Mike Polensik in this resolution and I certainly would ask that you add my name in all of the council who wants to be included in it. But I think that what is important as we move forward, as a party, we must show strength. And part of that strength is never taking off the table military options. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Councilman Kevin Conwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I echo Councilmember Mike Polensik and I saw what they did with South Africa. But what we did also is that the city of Cleveland put sanctions against South Africa. We didn't buy any purchasing or any procurement from South Africa and we should do the same thing with Russia. Anything that we do, we should look at it and just don't buy it from those, from these guys because they need to feel the pain, they need to feel the pain. I feel pain when I watch CNN and I see women inf着 children homes just blown up and little kids hearing bombs and where they're going to head start and going to school, the military is blowing up in that area. You gotta feel the pain, man, you gotta feel it. And I feel it in my guts for what happening to them as a humanitarian. Earlier, I met with Joe Sipperman and I told Joe Sipperman, I don't only want to give a speech, man, I want to help, anything I can do. When the refugees come over here, whatever the case may be, Joe Sipperman, with any humanitarian aid, I want to be there to help because actions speak louder than words. So, I'm there and I echo it and thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Conwell. Councilman Charles Sly.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to Councilman Polensik and others for leading the charge on this. It's a really important issue and, you know, watching the news, it really hearkens back to an era hundreds, hundred years ago, decades ago of countries invading other countries. But I just, in supporting this resolution and in passing this resolution, I don't want us to lose sight that problems like this are more common around the world than we want to admit. We have hundreds of Afghan families coming to Cleveland as we speak, fleeing violence in that part of the world. All over the world, there are people who need our support, who need our help. And just as, as we support the Ukrainian people, some of the characterizations on the news about it being, happening in a civilized country, I think is a problematic speech and we need to take this moment to realize that these atrocities, whether they happen in one place or another, are equally terrible. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Sly. Councilman Richard Starr. Councilman Richard Starr.
Y'all know I ain't good with this mic stuff. Where I'm from, we just use our outdoor voice a lot. Today, I just stand and rise with Councilwoman. Today, we did a resolution regarding the Cuyahoga County Jail site. Something that we want to definitely, I want to point out is that we need help as a body. And what I mean by that is we have to stick together and think about what's going on in our city. We have a lot of issues going on in the world, but it's most important to take care of issues happening at home. So, let me just paint this real quick picture of things that I see, things that I deal with. A mounted police station in a residential neighborhood in Ward 5 where residents' voices were not actually heard. A police headquarters coming across Opportunity Corridor. And then, most important, that we talking about a county jail. So, when you talk about restoring trust and understanding what residents want and their voice, that should be at the forefront of any decision that we make. Now, some of these decisions was made before some of the, what they call us freshman council members got here and that was then. But what I'm asking us as a body to do is start taking a stand and letting it be known. If it don't come across our floor, it shouldn't happen in our community, it shouldn't happen in our ward. We were elected to do a job and I want to stand with Councilwoman Moore and let her know that you got me fighting with you. And I want to ask Mayor Justin Bibb, how can we do something to change what is going on, the cycle, the passing of things that go in our community and then we calling a community meeting after things have been made? How can we work together? How can we make sure our residents' voices are heard and decisions are made? I thank you, Council President, for giving us the platform and the honor to be able to be here and work with each and every last one of my council members. But change starts with us and our voice and over there over in that county, they got to understand you can't just do what you want to do in Cleveland, not no more. Thank you.
And Councilman, just for the record, is just being introduced today, but this body does support you. Myself and Councilman McCormick sit on that committee and we definitely have had you and Councilwoman Moore's back through that process. And we will make sure that we collaborate with the administration to make it clear what our expectations are in this process, okay, Councilman? So, we will be bringing this up again for the full council to have for a vote, okay? Just want to make sure we acknowledge that. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on adoption.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh House, Jones, Casey, Moore, McCormack, Mooney, Polensik, Santana, Sly, Spencer, Starr. 16 yeas.
Second reading emergency ordinances to be passed.
Ordinance 1077, 2021 by Councilmember Polensik, designating the Slovenian Workman's Home as a Cleveland landmark. Ordinance 1147, 2021 by Councilmembers McCormack, Bishop and Brancatelli by departmental request, authorizing Director of Capital Projects to issue a permit to CCA, CBD, Cleveland to encroach into the public right-of-way of Euclid Avenue by installing and using approximately 12 micro piles of necessary subsurface support for the foundation for the tower crane to be used in the construction of the City Club Apartments project at 776 Euclid Avenue.
Read the motion to suspend the rules.
By Councilmember Starr, that the rules be suspended and the legislation just read be placed on final passage, seconded by Councilmember Moore.
Call the roll.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh House, Jones, Casey, Moore, McCormack, Mooney, Polensik, Santana, Sly, Spencer, Starr. 16 yeas.
Call the roll on passage.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh House, Jones, Casey, Moore, McCormack, Mooney, Polensik, Santana, Sly, Spencer, Starr. 16 yeas.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Second reading ordinances to be passed.
Ordinance 104, 2022 by Councilmembers Hairston and Conwell, changing the use, area and height districts of parcels of land north of St. Clair Avenue between East 90th and East 105th
Read the motion to suspend the rules.
By Councilmember Starr, that the rules be suspended and the legislation just read be placed on final passage, seconded by Councilmember Moore.
Call the roll.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh House, Jones, Casey, Moore, McCormack, Mooney, Polensik, Santana, Sly, Spencer, Starr. 16 yeas.
Call the roll on passage.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh House, Jones, Casey, Moore, McCormack, Mooney, Polensik, Santana, Sly, Spencer, Starr. 16 yeas.
All right, thank you. Are there any introductions, any introductions? I'd like to make sure that I acknowledge the members of CARE, our EMS union that is here. Could we all give them a round of applause if they could please stand? Oh, CWA, CWA. CWA, Communication Workers of America, thank you so much, all of you guys who are here I also want to take a moment to acknowledge our former staff person and he's sitting in the back pretty discreet, but I want him to stand up, Cam Reddick, if Cam Reddick could please stand. All right, and Mr. McCormick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to acknowledge two very special people tonight that are here with us. First, you heard from her earlier, but she's not getting away without me talking about her, Ms. Diane Howard. Ms. Howard, absolutely. Ms. Howard has been on the front lines of so many efforts to organize, to support our neighborhood, to support the Ohio City community in the, well, Ohio City, Cleveland, state of Ohio, national, international, one of the hardest fighters I've ever met in my life, one of the most wonderful people and she is always on the right side of history, working to make our community a better place. She's a pillar in the Ohio City and Ward 3 community, so, and our precinct committee person as well, she's awesome. The other person, Mr. President, is Don Whitaker of DW Whitaker Meets, who's in the back. Wave your hand. Mr. President, Don is a president of the West Side Market Tenants Association and has been a rock and steady leader for that organization and the group. He has been patient with this city when this city was not stepping up to the plate to support him and my, those are my words. And he has been all about moving progress forward, not just speeches, not just throwing things at people, but actually making progress for the vendors of the West Side market. So, I want to acknowledge him and honor him tonight.
Councilman Kevin Conwell.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Want to introduce, she doesn't need any introduction, but I do it anyway, Chanel Smith, she always calls you over there, yeah, man. I text her all the time, we texting, if she got something on her mind, she gonna text me and let me know about it right away. She'll let me know. And I know you do the toiletry and you help us out and I help senior citizens and I help schools and I get the toiletry from you. You always out there helping in the community, you're not from our ward, but you love and you help everybody. And I forgot your name. Odetta. She brings in thousands and thousands of dollars worth of toiletry to give to senior citizens and young children and I pick it up with the truck and take it to the schools, Odetta. So, thank you very much. My good friend who's always helping out in the community and she just helped the wife out with her P, was that PTSD walk, Bridget Grant, and she's always helping out in the neighborhood, she come help with me with Councilman Conwell. So, we give it up for Bridget Grant, thank you very, very much. Freddie Key already, already mentioned you.
Thank you so much, Councilman Conwell. Councilwoman Moore.
Hi, thank you. Councilman Conwell, you stole one of my residents, Odetta Fields is a Ward 12 resident, so, every ward would be lucky to have many, to have many Odetta Fields. I would like to introduce three incredible Slavic Village residents who are here this evening, Odetta Fields, Pam Shelley and Sharina Zayed. We're so lucky to have you guys here and I just want to tell a couple stories briefly about these folks because these three women are part of a group of very active residents that are holding down Slavic Village in the best way possible. You have to, you'll have to ask them for all the details, but Pam and Odetta once went on a day-long adventure to get 100 frozen turkeys back up from Youngstown to get them to freezer so that they could be handed out at Oak Street Health on Broadway Avenue. And Sharina is the newly hired, we call her the Weaver, the community Weaver up at University Settlement, but I mean, she's a community organizer and I know we haven't gotten to know each other for too long, Sharina, but just your fight for your family, for the community, I am always inspired. And following up on what Councilman Starr said about the resolution that we've introduced tonight opposing the Cuyahoga County Jail at a site in Ward 12 immediately adjacent to residential communities in Slavic Village North Broadway, I just want to say really clearly, I wouldn't organize a holiday party in Slavic Village without talking to these three women. And if you're trying to build a $500 million jail in their backyard and you're not talking to them first, you have a fight coming for you. So, I want to thank them for taking the time to come down here tonight. You all have the community's back, you all represent hundreds of residents and I really thank you for taking the time tonight.
Councilman Mike Polensik on introductions.
No, miscellaneous.
Miscellaneous? Okay, seeing no more introductions, are there any announcements? Any announcements? Seeing no announcements, I'll move to miscellaneous, Councilman Mike Polensik and then Councilman Joe Jones and then Councilman Kerry McCormick.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Honorable Mayor, Madam Clerk, my honorable colleagues. I just want to rise and thank all of our colleagues. I just want to rise and thank all of our colleagues for their dedication and service this last week, last week, for the budget presentation, mayor's letter, transmitter, who attended. You know, Mr. Chairman, I also want to really single out the new members of City Council who really had some great questions.
Yes.
Who really asked a lot of questions. And, and as I've said before, there are no dumb questions. All of us can learn, all of us can have, go down different paths and ask questions that maybe someone just had not thought of before. We have a lot on our plate. We have some tough decisions to make, as you know, Mr. Chairman, members, my colleagues, and members of the administration. We've got a, we want to, we kind of have a balanced budget, but we also have to have one that is thinking ahead, because we have no idea what the economy's going to be. So as we finish the remainder of this week, we had a healthy discussion about utilities. I want to thank Chairman Casey for his fine leadership on utility issues. We got, we have some real tough decisions to make on behalf of this city, whether it be public safety, utilities, I'm going building and housing, I'm thinking all the things. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm looking forward to reconciliation, working with you on those issues. Some things might have to change. There might be some different maneuverings, some different paths we have to go on. At the end of the day, we have got to have a budget that focuses on those issues that are important to our citizens, the quality of life issues. That's what I heard all of last year, when I walked the streets, as I always do. I didn't have people asking me as I was pounding on their door or walking up on their front porch steps, they weren't telling me that I needed to give more money to Jimmy Haslam. They were telling me that they needed to have services on their street, they needed to see policemen, they needed to get the trees trimmed, they needed to get the streets repaired, they needed to get the parks and playgrounds improved. This budget that we're about to enact sometime soon, by the first, has got to be a real people's budget. And so again, I want to just thank my colleagues for the time and service that they showed the whole weekend, and again, today, Mr. Chairman. I know, you know, you've got those phone calls coming in, you got those emails coming in, you're trying to respond to those, you're trying to respond to neighborhood meetings, but tells me, it told me a whole lot as the senior member, when I looked at that room, the number of people who were in there, the number of people who were in that room. I know they had to go out at times, make phone calls, et cetera, but it showed me you have a body today that is more dedicated than ever before to dealing with the city service issues. So again, I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your leadership. I look forward to reconciliation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Polensic. And just to undergird what he's saying, it was, it's been phenomenal watching some of the newer members ask questions and really make a deep dive, and I ask the administration to be patient. I know that this is going a little longer than a lot of people have expected, but it's, you know, we got a new body, and we really want to make sure that we do our due diligence. So thank you, Councilman Polensic. Councilman Joe Jones has asked for extra time. Councilman Joe Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President, to my colleagues, to the mayor of the city of Cleveland. We lost a great giant, and talking about Black History, we lost a great giant, Congressman Louis Stokes, who graduated from Central High School in 1943. And whereas Congressman Louis Stokes served as a personal specialist in the United States Army, he served in our military. And Louis Stokes returned to Cleveland to attend the Cleveland College Western Reserve University in 1946, 48, and subsequently earned his Juris Doctor from the Cleveland Marshall School of Law in 1953. Congressman Louis Stokes practiced law for 14 years and founded the Stokes-Stokes in Character and Terry Law Firm. And during this time, his law firm became involved in a number of civil rights-related cases, often working pro bono on behalf of poor clients and activists. Congressman Louis Stokes tried three cases before the United Supreme Court, including the landmark case of Terry versus Ohio, which defined the legality of police search and seizure procedures. Whereas on November 6, 1968, Louis Stokes was elected to the United States House of Representative of the 21st, later the 11th Congressional of Ohio. And whereupon, his election, he became the first African American to represent the state of Ohio. He was a founding member of the Congressional Black Caucus, an organization comprised of Black members of the United States Congress, created to be the voice for people of color and vulnerable communities, and he served as the chair for two terms. In 1971, Congressman Stokes was the first African American to serve the House Appropriations Committee. And in his retirement in 1998, he earned a distinguished rank of Cardinal as Chair of the Subcommittee of VA HUD Independent Agencies. And whereas Congressman Stokes chaired a number of historic committees, such as the House Select Committee on the Assassination of President John F. Kennedy and Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., the 95th Congress, the Permanent Select Committee on Intelligence, the 100th Congress, and the Committee of Standards of the Official Conduct of the 97th and 98th Congress. He also served on the committee, on the House Committee on Budget, and gained national prominence as a member of the House Select Committee to investigate the covert transactions of Iran in 1987. And in 1998, he successfully led the House in Passage of HR 635, the National Underground Railroad Network to Freedom Act, his final major piece of legislation. And after serving 15 consecutive terms in the United States House of Representative, Congressman Stokes ranked 11th out of 435 members of Congress and was the dean of the Ohio delegation. And whereas few members have left such an indelible mark in the institution, his kindness, integrity, and diligence worked hard for both sides of the aisle to serve the constituents of the congressional district to which he represented, the citizens of the United States of America. He worked tirelessly for minorities, the poor, the disadvantaged persons, and he played a pivotal role in the quest for civil rights, equality, and justice. And as we look here today at Black History Month, he was a great giant that brought in hundreds of millions of dollars into the city of Cleveland. He worked to establish here in the city of Cleveland, Black elected Democrats of Cleveland, Ohio, because he wanted to bring the African American leadership in the city of Cleveland together for the purpose of working on legislation that helped African Americans in the city of Cleveland. He further founded the 21st Congressional District Caucus, which was established in the early 1970s, and it was established for the purpose of being able to be treated fair within the political process. It was a nonpartisan operation of creation due to the fact that at that time, Democrats, Black Democrats, and minorities were mistreated by the Democratic Party. And so in that time, it was created by Mr. Forbes, Mr. Pinkney, and Mr. Stokes, and Carl Stokes, for the purpose of saying to the Democrats of Cleveland, Ohio, and Cuyahoga County, we will no longer give you our vote. You have to earn our vote. And so at the end of the day, when it comes to public service, I'm honored, Mr. President, and to the mayor of the city of Cleveland, to have had the opportunity to be mentored by such a great leader who represented this congressional district in honor and never had an issue. And so with that, on Black History Month, I want to give kudos to one of the greatest giants to represent his congressional district, Congressman Louis Stokes, and we lost a great giant in 2015. And I want to say to my colleagues who are here, sometimes it's about good trouble. So sometimes people are not going to like what you have to say, but you represent the interest of your constituents and your community. And sometimes what is being said, they're saying it through you, because they have no other vehicle to bring it forth. And so that is why we are elected as elected officials, to serve the interest of our people. But more important, Mr. Griffin, President of Cleveland City Council, I know that that generation of Black leadership would look at you as the president of Cleveland City Council and look at Justin Bibb as the mayor of our city, and they will be absolutely astounded and excited that we have come to such a point in time in this city where we will have Black representation that's representing all of the citizens of the city of Cleveland. May God bless your leadership. May our city get millions and hundreds of millions of dollars into it through your leadership. May our communities be blessed, and thank you, Mr. President and Mayor of the city
Thank you so much, Councilman Jones. Well put, very well put. We definitely had a gentleman from Ohio that represented all of us well. Thank you so much. I have Councilman McCormick and then Councilman Starr. Councilman McCormick.
Thank you, Mr. President. In 2012, the city of Cleveland celebrated the Centennial of the West Side Market, widely recognized as one of the most iconic public markets in the country. The market sees over a million visitors every single year and is home to many, many local small businesses, some which have called the market home since it opened its doors over 100 years ago. We know, Mr. President, that the West Side Market is the crown jewel, one of the crown jewels of the city of Cleveland, and a regional asset and statewide, across the board, treasure that we all know and love. Unfortunately, Mr. President, despite the hard-working small businesses in the market, despite the loyal patrons, the city of Cleveland historically has failed to invest in the market and to provide the attention it's needed to continue into the next 100 years. In 2012, we had a big party, and we celebrated the Centennial, and it was exciting, but from that point on, we saw very little attention paid to this gem of the city of Cleveland. Mr. President, with your support and the support of this body, with the drive and direction of the mayor of the city of Cleveland, today's an exciting day where we start to see actual progress on turning the tides for the West Side Market. The items that were introduced today, two pieces of legislation, Mr. President, are not groundbreaking, but the vendors of the West Side Market and the community have been asking for these changes for years. Let's expand leases, the terms, to allow a small business to invest in their business with assurance. Let's clarify and simplify the lease terms of our leases within the market to make sure that we are capping high increases and also streamlining and simplifying the leases across the board. Let's open up the market and remove restrictions so that we can bring in innovative programming in the market to support our vendors. Let's ensure that we're partnering with neighborhood organizations to promote the market and connect the community and the greater Cleveland community to the market itself. Mr. President, the two pieces of legislation that were introduced today, which I fully support, and I thank you for your support as well, are not a silver bullet, they're not the end-all, they're not going to fix everything, but they are an important step and a demonstration that this council and this mayor is acting on the needs of the West Side Market and not just showing up to a forum and not just talking about it, but actually being about the change that our beloved West Side Market needs. So again, Mr. President, we've got a long way to go. We've got a lot of capital needs still left at the market. I'm looking at some key people over here. We've got a long way to go to support our vendors, to ensure that they can grow and thrive, and that generational businesses can be passed down from one to the other. We've got vacancies across the market, which although are a problem, are an opportunity to diversify our vendor pool, something that we know that we need to do at the West Side Market. So again, Mr. President, we on this side of the aisle, with your support, have been bringing these issues up for years, the vendors have, the community has, and I'm excited that our mayor has heard those issues loud and clear and is working with council to deploy changes on the ground and ensure that the West Side Market really grows into the potential that we know it has. Mr. President, our community deserves this. Our beautiful, over 100-year market deserves this. The folks that have poured blood, sweat, and tears into their small businesses as vendors deserve this. Cleveland deserves this attention to the West Side Market. So again, I thank you, Mr. President, and I thank you, Mayor, for working everyone together to ensure that our market is finally prioritized.
Thank you so much, Councilman McCormick, and thank you so much for your leadership on this as well. And even though it is in Ward 3, it is all of our market, and it's something, even though it's called the West Side Market, us Eastsiders love it too. So thank you so much. All right. Seeing no more, oh, Mike, I'm sorry, Mike, Mike Polensic?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Honorable Mayor, Madam Clerk. I just wanted to rise as well to thank Kerry for his concern for the market and to the council president and to the mayor. I've been going to the market since I was a kid with my grandfather, and I stood there Saturday at Frank's Bratwurst Stand after I had gone to Whitaker's to get livers for our lady dog, chicken livers. She loves them, man, let me tell you. She'll kill you for them chicken livers. But I stood there looking at that magnificent art ceiling of all the times I came through there, from the time of my grandfather holding my hand and what that market meant. And what, and every time I go in there, like I did on Saturday, and there was a great crowd in there on Saturday, to me, it's Cleveland. It's Cleveland. It's young, and it's old, and it's black, and it's white, and it's every nationality, every race, every religion, and you can just see the mix of people. You have people that are in six-figure incomes and other people on public assistance. It's that place in Cleveland where people truly come together, and that's why it's so important. And what I heard on Saturday, for the first time in a long time, I heard optimism. I heard merchants telling me they, for the first time in years, think finally something's going to happen with the new council leadership, the new administration, Councilman McCormick and others. So I go there at least once a week, got to take care of a lady, get her bones, and get some other things, and the livers and everything else, I love going there for. But again, it's over 100 years old. If we can't make the market work, then we can't make nothing work. We can't make nothing work, and that market symbolizes Cleveland. Let's never forget that. So again, I want to just thank everyone who's involved in this, and I look forward to the committee process and discussing this in detail. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much, Councilman Polensic. Madam Clerk, please excuse the absences.
By Councilmember Starr, that the absence of Councilmember Santana is hereby excused, seconded by Councilmember Moore.
Thank you. The next regular meeting, this meeting is adjourned, but the next regular meeting for council is next Monday, March the 7th. Thank you.